Good morning, everyone. Thank you very much for coming in even though you're 15 minutes late. Can I ask the clerks, the police, to announce who are present this morning in the halls?
Speaker, Senators. Senator Espaldon, Senator Trenorio, Senator Blas, Senator Tina Munya Barnes, Senator Palacios, Senator Cruz, Senator Rispicio.
Thank you, thank you very much for being here this morning. Now, we need to get the... Eight with me, wonderful, we have a quorum. Now, the question is, is that do we have the resolution? Okay, copies are being made, so we won't call session to order until such time that everyone gets a copy of the resolution. Order Senator Rispicio, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that the session agenda dated February 11, 2010, which has three legislative concurrences from the Committee on Labor and the substitute Resolution 275-30 in the second reading file, I move that this be adopted as our agenda for today's session.
On the motion, then, without any objections, so ordered. I'd like to ask if Senator Trenorio, you can lead us in prayer?
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Lord, help guide our colleagues in this legislative body in the process of making laws, resolutions, and to represent all the needs of the people of Guam. Help and guide us with your wisdom to be able to make sound judgments to lead our island into a period of prosperity and to be able to stand up and represent the rights and the interests of all of our people, from those in every village, from every walk of life, and to help us to make sure that our words and our representations are those things that help all the people of Guam in the greatest possible way. In your name, amen.
Thank you very much. Can I ask Senator Palacios if he can lead us in the recitation of Inefresi?
(speaking Spanish) 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 (speaking Spanish)
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Senator Frank Blas, can you lead us in the Vanogi Chomoroo? And Senator Guthers in the singing of the National Anthem?
(singing) Vanogi chomoroo, furita nota, kantai matu na'nyagi, todu iluka. Para i onra, para i gloria, abiba i isla sen para. Para i onra, para i gloria, abiba i isla sen para. To du i tempo i pas, para hita, zan geni ni langit na bendisyon. Kontra i peligro, na fan safulham, Zeus protehi island Guam. Kontra i peligro, na fan safulham, Zeus protehi island Guam.
Oh, say, can't you see, by the dawn's early light? Was so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming. Whose broad stripes, bright stars, through the perilous fight? Oh, the ramparts red-washed were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you very much. We ask the clerks to please take local. Senator Ada? Senator Uggun? Senator Blas? Senator Calvo? Senator Cruz? Senator Espaldon? Senator Guthers? Senator Munya Barnes? Senator Palacios? Senator Panglinen? Senator Rispicio? Senator Taitugui? Senator Trenorio? And Speaker Wampat? Madam Speaker, there is a quorum. Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize the Majority Leader, Senator Rispicio.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I move that we approve the Legislative Journal dated January 20, 22nd, 2010, and we approve this subject to correction.
On that motion, then, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you. Under Communications and Petitions, I'd like that we ask if you could recognize Senator Tina to read one communication that you just received this morning.
I'd like to call upon the Legislative Secretary, Senator Munya Barnes, to read a communication.
Sido smasi, Madam Speaker. This was received this morning at February 11, 9:30. It's from the Congress of the United States to the Honorable Judith T. Wampat, Speaker, Chairwoman of Committee on Education, to the Minatrenta and Alastair Ture in Guahan. Dear Senator Wampat, thank you for your letter regarding Senator Jim Webb's visit to Guam. I am currently working closely with Senator Webb's office to arrange a meeting with the Guam Legislature as well as the Governor, and we will coordinate possible times with you as soon as we receive feedback from the Senator's office. It is our practice to urge congressional leaders visiting Guam to include meetings of the Guam Legislature in their schedule. Again, thank you for your correspondence. My staff will contact you very soon regarding Senator Webb's schedule. Sincerely, Madeline Z. Bredalio, Member of Congress.
Thank you very much. Senator Rispicio, then, the motion for communications?
Thank you, yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Senator Barnes. I move that that communication and petition, as well as all other communications and petitions received, be appended to today's session agenda.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I move that there are messages from the Governor. I move that these also be appended to today's session agenda.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Under reports of standing committees, Senator Guthers has made a request, and I ask that you recognize her on this side.
Senator Guthers, you are recognized.
Thank you. Malo, can staff please distribute the materials? Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker and colleagues. Madam Speaker and colleagues of the 30th Guam Legislature, on behalf of all members of the Committee on Ethics and Standards, I am pleased to transmit all official records of Ethics Complaint 001, the Mesa Complaint, and Ethics Complaint 002, the Harrah Complaint, to you, Madam Speaker, which were recently the subject of deliberations and action by the committee. These official records of the committee represent all of the meetings, hearings, deliberations, actions, and correspondence of the committee with respect to these two complaints. On behalf of the committee, we wish to make it known that all of our meetings and activities were completely transparent, as documented in and by the official records of the committee and the video recordings of the proceedings. These records should be considered public documents, and the committee requests that they be housed in a dedicated filing cabinet. in a dedicated filing cabinet and also later scanned in the Archives and Records Division of the Guam Legislature for use by members of the legislature and the public now and in the future. Permit me, Madam Speaker, to extend the sincere appreciation of myself and the members of the Ethics and Standards Committee for your cooperation and to all senators and to the legislative staff for their assistance in facilitating our duties to the people of Guam. We stand ready, as members of the committee, to serve should the need arise in the future. Madam Speaker, I've also distributed at this time a copy of the final resolution of the final disposition of Ethics Complaint Number 001, the Mesa complaint, and also the resolution on the resolution of the final disposition of the Ethics Complaint 002. In addition, I am distributing the finalized Committee on Ethics and Standards Legal Counsel's procedural recommendations with reference to our rules and recommendations. And later, Madam Speaker, I will introduce an action through the Rules Committee requesting that the revised rules and regulations that were approved by the committee be adopted by the full legislature. At this time, I would like to ask the Sergeant-at-Arms and Mr. Cruz to assist. Please assist in bringing the official proceedings box to the podium of the Speaker for the official transmittal. Madam Speaker, in closing, I'd like to say that, as all of us know, when the committee was first organized, we conducted a careful search to try to find previous records of previous ethics committees. And we were unable to do that. Nowhere in this legislature, in our current archives or in our storage areas, were there any records of previous ethics committees. And of course, the committee members were very indebted to Senator Ben Panglinen, our former speaker, for having located on our behalf a copy of the rules and regulations that the committee used during his chairmanship of the Ethics Committee. And we took those rules and regs, and we adopted them with very minor updating as our rules. I also want to thank the members of the committee for their outstanding service and their objectivity and their wisdom throughout this process. Now, Speaker, you have the official records, and the committee looks to you and to the Chair of the Committee on Rules to ensure that these records are properly maintained and available to other members of this legislature and future legislatures and to the public at large. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Guthers. Senator Rispio, on the motion then.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Senator Guthers. I then move that Senator Guthers' report, as well as all other reports of standing committees, be appended to today's session journal.
On that motion then, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. There are no reports of select committees, so moving along, I move that Bill Number 317-30COR to Bill Number 327-30COR be given its introduction and first reading.
On that motion then, without any objections, so ordered.
And the same with Resolution Number 276-30COR to Resolution Number 281-30COR.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Under motions, I move that all resolutions and certificates of commendation or condolence introduced today up until the end of this session be accepted and adopted and that the legal counsel and the clerk work with the sponsoring senator for any additional technical amendments and that all senators be co-sponsor of these resolutions or certificates.
On that motion then, without any objections, so ordered.
Under legislative concurrence, from the interim Chairman of the Committee on Labor, the Public Structure, Public Libraries, and Technology, on the appointment of Mr. Luis Arbazza to serve as a member of the Civil Service Commission with that committee's recommendation to confirm, I move that this be placed in the voting file.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
From the same interim chairman, from the same committee, on the appointment of Mr. Daniel D. Leon Guerrero to serve on the Civil Service Commission with that committee's recommendation to confirm, I move that it be moved to the voting file.
Without any objections, so ordered.
And the same thing for item number three, Madam Speaker. On the appointment of Mr. Manuel Penanum to serve as a member of the Civil Service Commission Board with a recommendation to confirm.
Without any objections, so ordered. Senator Rispio.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. On the second reading file is a substitute Resolution 275-30. This resolution is going to be the legislature's official response to the draft environmental impact statement, and it's had a week-long public hearing, but it takes into account all the expressions of concern raised from the moment we heard that this military is coming to Guam and they're going to move 8,900 Marines from Okinawa to Guam. I want to commend you and every single member of this legislature for being a co-sponsor of this resolution. And as you know, we've had the last couple of days in your conference room in work sessions going over this resolution and adding all the contributions of every single member of this legislature. Our staff, as you can see, are incorporating those concerns, and this is an excellent work in progress, we all believe. And we're told that if we come back at 1:00, we should be able to, I should be able then to make a motion to have this resolution placed on the third reading file with some discussion. So I move at this time that we recess and come back at 1:00.
So we will recess until this afternoon, please, at 1:00. Thank you. 1:00. In session, I recognize the Majority Leader, Senator Rispio.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that Resolution Number 275-30LS be placed in the voting file, and there will be some discussion.
Okay, please. So would you want to be the first person to speak?
Yes, yes. Thank you very, thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and to all of our colleagues for all the tremendous contribution with this resolution that's been incorporated into this version that you see before us. This resolution, Madam Speaker, is relative to presenting to President Barack Obama and the Congress of the United States the sentiments expressed by the people of Guam relative to the draft environmental impact statement for the Guam military buildup to enumerate the findings of Ilastatura that have led to the conclusion that the DEIS is grossly flawed and to provide a list of essential elements which must be adequately addressed to restate Guam's agenda priority concerns relative to the federal-territorial issues that must be addressed concurrently with the buildup and to assert additional findings and actionable items relative to this DEIS process. Madam Speaker, my dear colleagues, we are hoping that Resolution Number 275 will be the vehicle to which we can officially convey to members of Congress, to anyone in the federal government, particularly the Department of Defense, the Joint Guam Program Office, that there are a lot of issues with this military buildup. From the moment the DEIS was presented to us back in November 20, even several years prior to that, many of us, including many members of our community, have expressed so much concern with this buildup, and all these concerns have been enumerated in this resolution. First of all, this resolution recognizes that this process from the very beginning is flawed. And that was a concern that was brought up by Senator Telo Titegui, who said, "How can we even begin to address a document when the basis of which this document was submitted is flawed? It didn't take into account many elements to recognize some, to give this DEIS during a time when it was a very sensitive period for us culturally and religiously, and how can we have enough time to do due diligence in the review of this process?" But notwithstanding the recognition that this DEIS process is flawed, we also recognize that we're living within the constraints of the NEPA process, which first we have to ask for additional time and then ask for an additional review period before the final DEIS is submitted to us. So this resolution recognizes that. This resolution also, Madam Speaker, recognizes the residents who've testified over the public hearing period that the issues of land condemnation, this legislature's resolution will take the position that the military must live within the existing footprint and that we do not support any land condemnations whatsoever. This DEIS is problematic because it purports to destroy culturally and historical significant sites. There's going to be a prohibition against or the restriction of civilian access. There's destruction of marine ecosystems, the spread of existing radioactive contamination by dredging Upper Harbor. There'll be adverse impacts to our environment, further restraint in already dwindling our resources. And more importantly, Madam Speaker, there's a lack of commitment on the federal government to provide the people of Guam, the government of Guam, funds to mitigate in the areas of capital improvement, social infrastructure, human development, combating of invasive species. And so we've taken all of these concerns and in meeting with Congresswoman Bredalio, who came before you and members of this legislature last week, she said that she met with the governor and there's a list of common ground areas which we can find some kind of basis to which we can approach and address this military buildup. And among those common ground areas, the legislature would like to go a step further, and this resolution reflects that. The first common ground area is that in the area of land, the military buildup should be limited to the existing footprint of federal land holdings. In the area of dredging, this has been a very sensitive issue, and this DEIS is so insensitive in that they said they can dredge to provide for additional birthing facilities for these aircraft carriers that have to come to Guam. And the Congresswoman's position is that, "Let's test the radioactive material first, and if it's found that it's not radioactive, then we'll dredge." But this legislature's position, Madam Speaker, through this resolution, is no dredging period because it's not only the radioactive contaminants that we're concerned about, it's also the destruction of live coral and the ecosystems in that area. I know you have had an opportunity to join the Guam, the We Are Guam movement, where you can actually see how beautiful that area is, and I know that you would share that with us. There's also a lack of physical, fiscal, and mental health care addressing this DEIS. This impact will not only impact our health care capabilities, but also our mental health care for all of these individuals that will be involved in this military buildup. There's also the impact of building on socio-cultural institutions. There's also the impact on our infrastructure and the position that this legislature is taking that we must have one integrated power, water, and wastewater system. And at our public hearing, it was noted that if the Navy pulled out as a customer to Guam Power Authority, I think to the tune of $21 million annually, if not more, that's how much they pay as a customer. If they pull out as a customer, then the people of Guam would have to take that loss, and all the ratepayers will have to absorb that. And that's absolutely something that we won't stand for. Issues of pollution control. And this resolution, again, restates our agenda of priority concerns which was adopted in the previous Resolution Number 15. And we have to remind members of Congress, we have to remind our own governor, our own delegate, that as you talk about this military buildup, you should also talk about the recognition of the right to self-determination of native inhabitants of Guam. You should talk about the need for a just political status and a political status plebiscite must occur. You must talk about the resolution of the issues of unreturned ancestral lands by way of return of lands either to actual land involved or equivalent partials. You must talk about the implementation of war reparations before you even begin to talk about the military buildup. You must talk about the issues of supplemental security income, issues involving the exemptions from the Jones Act, removal of funding caps on Medicaid and public assistance programs, full reimbursement for impact costs of the compacts of reassociation of Guam's government resources, the provision of sufficient health care resources to address the needs of Guam's veterans and all of Guam's families, cleanup of environmental hazards that were created or augmented by the federal government to include environmental protections, investigation and treatment of serious health problems related to federal activity, including downwinders and those individuals who reside in Guam at the time of nuclear weapons testing in the Pacific, full participation in economic stimulus legislation, especially as it relates to public facility structure, infrastructure projects, and public safety facilities, greater participation in federal mass transit and other public transportation programs, establishment of a secure Guam-only visa waiver program for visitors, assistance with other economic development initiatives, reimbursements of EITC, inclusion of Russia and the People's Republic of China and the list of approved countries for the Guam CNMI visa waiver program. And we strongly have taken this position from the very beginning that when you are in a situation where you're going to have to negotiate, you have to have some kind of leverage. And you should have leveraged these things from the very beginning to the military buildup, and that's what we've been asking our governor and our Congresswoman to do. This resolution, Madam Speaker, is extremely substantive in that it has several findings. Page 10, finding number one, that this massive, this most massive peacetime military buildup in American history will take place in America's smallest communities, such as a drastic imposition of military might must be coupled with a moral obligation to provide a deeper and more sincere consideration of Guam's civilian community. Ilastatura and Guahan, the voice of one of the nation's most patriotic communities, shares in the commitment to force security for our nation and the world, but strongly maintains that the protection of our country cannot come at the expense and destruction of Guam's people. And that's our first finding, which also highlights that this DEIS process is flawed. The second finding is very intriguing because the DEIS in Volume 1, Table ES-2, depicts that the estimated total population increase in Guam from off-island, direct, indirect, or induced. Would you believe, Madam Speaker, that their population figures do not account for the existing population that's on Guam? And so the chart accounts for Guam's natural population growth as well as the total number of people that will be in Guam on average each day of the year indicated. Based on this information, Guam's population base will grow by about 17% from 2010 to 2020, as will visitor arrivals. You know, and so we've, as a group, as a body, have dissected that particular area, and we find that the GAO findings in this subject area are inconsistent with the DEIS findings, and we're recommending and strongly ordering by this resolution that those findings must be reconciled. Finding number three deals with, based on this inconsistency in this population assessment, that the actual need for power would be much more than what the DEIS is asking for. In finding four, our Chairwoman of the Military Buildup Committee could probably speak more to this at a later time. But basically, she's discovered that in the CNMI covenant, there's an actual council, a civil-military advisory council, that deals with these kinds of issues. Nowhere in the DEIS does it provide for any ongoing meaningful dialogue between elected leaders of Guam and the military people, particularly the Department of Defense. Finding six deals with a requirement for an omnibus appropriation. Finding seven deals with the impact on tourism that this massive number of construction projects and heavy trucks that will clog the highways, the dramatic increase in the numbers- numbers that avail themselves to Guam's entertainment industry and beautiful beaches, a heightened, more visible military presence that can make travelers nervous, and it talks about the need to have this Chinese visa, China visa waiver program implemented in parallel to this military buildup. Finding number eight deals with the socioeconomic impact study and entire DEIS. There are many, many inconsistencies and omissions of data that make assessing this impact of activity proposed by the Department of Defense to the taxpayers of Guam unqualifiable. And this finding has been inserted in this resolution by our chairman on appropriations, who's refuted the claim that this military buildup will bring so much more revenue to the government of Guam and to the people of Guam, and this finding says that, refutes that claim entirely. Finding number nine, the impact on medical facilities and healthcare current population will be sharpened by the dramatic population increase. This was a finding that our minority leader has presented to us, and has been incorporated into this resolution, to ask that, that because there's increasing access to, the need for increasing access to healthcare as the population boom is critical, especially as Guam's people struggle with increasing costs and federal restrictions on accessing U.S.-accredited quality care in the Philippines, that the federal government must allow the reimbursement of all Medicare and Medicaid costs incurred by U.S.-accredited health institutions in the Republic of the Philippines for services rendered to Guam patients receiving care there. And so finding number 10, also submitted to us by the, by our friends in the minority, that as this military buildup seeks to bring in additional 8,600 Marines to the island, so then we would see an increase in our veterans' population. And so this finding reports that the substantial growth will be met with an increasing need to provide services to veterans, and currently, Madam Speaker, not all services under the Veterans Benefits Administration are processed on islands. So this finding requests that the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs open an office in Guam, offering full services to veterans living here on Guam. Finding 11 says that the economic boom brought by the military buildup will be followed by recession, and it's important to mitigate any negative economic period to ensure sustained prosperity by giving Guam new and necessary regulatory control over its own resources. And if this resolution goes on further to talk about this meeting, that the Congresswoman came to us, presented these concerns to us, and then, and if you remember, our meeting was after a week, where the community came out and felt that our Congresswoman needs to pay a little bit better attention to how the people truly feel about this buildup. And when asked if the Congresswoman will represent the legislature's position, if we were to pass a resolution unifying us and how to approach this buildup, she said that she will represent this position. So additionally, Madam Speaker, we're hoping that the passage of this resolution will unite the legislature, then unite the Congresswoman, and then obviously unite our chief executive, so all of us can have one concerted approach and have one voice in dealing with this buildup. And on page 18, line three, that resolve clause, that's really an important resolve clause, and is the crux of this whole resolution. It basically says that the legislature, on behalf of the people of Guam, affirm that the six essential elements of compliance that warrant favorable resolution in planning for the buildup, specifically land, dredging, physical and mental health care, impact on the buildup on socio-cultural institutions, infrastructure upgrades and pollution control, which without resolution, this buildup will be held in abeyance and no action be taken. No action, Madam Speaker. If these, if the federal government fails to recognize and to favorably resolve those concerns that our people have expressed over the years with this buildup, this legislature takes a position that this military buildup be held in abeyance and no action be taken. And that's a very important statement to stress. And this additional resolve clause that your suggestion, Madam Speaker, recognizes that the president is on his way to Guam, who will be here on March 19, and it requests him to have a town hall-style meeting with the people of Guam, and get some face time with the president, so that he could hear exactly the people of Guam's concerns, I'll say hopes, I'll say fears, with this buildup and what it does, and what it will do to our island. And so having said that, Madam Speaker, this resolution is also transmitted to everyone that needs to see this. But having said that, I want to thank all of our colleagues, I want to thank all of our staff collectively for contributing to this resolution. Even though we were supposed to go into session on Monday or Tuesday to review this, or to have this addressed in session, instead, we chose to have work sessions in your conference room, where this document was actually put on an overhead projector, and there was a lot of meaningful substantive discussion and dialogue as to how this resolution can be made better. And I'm going to stand before you and everyone to say that this resolution, although originally introduced by every single member of the legislature, because it had the cooperation, support and cooperation of every single member of this legislature, this resolution in its most recent form has actually been made better, and I want to express my appreciation to everyone for that. This resolution, again, it kind of has the legislature reaching out to the people, asking them how they feel about the buildup. It takes into account the work of the We Are Guam Movement, and other community action-type groups to come forward to say what this buildup will do to our island. But it's the legislature reaching out to ask the people how they feel about it. And then after hearing from them, we developed this resolution to support and to represent that position. So after this resolution is passed, I'm hoping that our delegate and the governor will follow suit and represent how the people of Guam feel about this resolution. So this is a truly historic and momentous occasion for this legislature to be united solidly behind a vehicle that would best represent our position, and best represent how we're going to respond to this draft environmental impact statement. I'm still obviously open to any more amendments, or any additional concerns you or any colleague may have, and we would just keep moving forward until we can get a consensus, and we can stand united so that other elected leaders can follow suit. But I thank you for the opportunity to present Resolution 275-30. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Respecho. On the motion, would anyone like to speak? Senator Guthrie, I recognize.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand very proud of this legislature, for the time it took to enhance this resolution, to represent our collective views on the major issues presented in the draft environmental impact statement, a product that was developed by the Department of Defense to guide the proposed military buildup on Guam. I'm honored to be a co-sponsor of this bill with Senator Respecho, and the Speaker, and the rest of the senators. Madam Speaker, as Chair of the Committee on the Guam Military Buildup and Homeland Security, I've had the opportunity over the last year and a half to interact with representatives of the military community that are involved in the execution of plans for the military buildup, including the Jigpo Office, the Admiral's Office, representatives of the Air Force, off-island representatives from the Department of Defense, off-island representatives from the Department of Interior, various congressional delegations. And the single message that I have always emphasized to these officials is that this buildup must be a win-win for the military and all of the people of Guam. And a win-win means that both sides benefit. I have also been very aggressive in stressing to the Jigpo representatives that they must be very considerate and careful in how they approach their plans for this buildup. They must take into consideration the history of the people of Guam, their historical experiences during the Japanese occupation of Guam, the post-war activities of the military on Guam, and our territorial and federal relationship. I said there really is no way you can separate these matters from the massive proposed military buildup that the Department of Defense would like to put in place here on our island. They do relate to each other in a very, very significant way, and it would be very important, particularly for the Jigpo Office, General Byss and his team, to be cautious in how they approach this buildup, and sensitive to our community in how they approach this buildup. I must say, Madam Speaker, all of us know, because all of us have family members in the military. Yes, even I have family members in the military. At this point, I have a nephew by marriage who is serving in the Middle East, married to my niece Kimberly, his name is Danny Fanonia from Baragata. And I have other family members, serving in the Middle East, fighting for our country, and for the democracy that we all hold dear. But I told General Byss that I understand his mission, his mission is to ensure this buildup happens. That's his mission. His mission really is not to help prepare the civilian community for this buildup. That really is not his responsibility, or the responsibility of the Joint Guam Program Office. That is the responsibility of the United States federal government, including the executive branch and the Congress of the United States. And that's exactly what has been missing in this whole equation. This is now two years that we're aware of, and we've been observing into this process. And yet, our national government has not made a commitment to really help us prepare for this buildup in any significant way. We've gotten promises, we've gotten pledges, but we've gotten very little resources to help us prepare for this buildup. And I think that is what has contributed to the uneasiness that many people in our community feel. You know, Madam Speaker, this community, this island government, only generates so much money. We certainly do not have the money at this time to put in place the required infrastructure, the expansion of our school system, the expansion of our hospital, our health facilities, the acquiring and being able to meet the costs of bringing in more personnel to enforce regulations of this government, and to protect this community. We don't have the money to do that right now. And yet, we are going to experience, at a minimum, an increase of our population of about 80,000 people, and I suspect it'll be much more, in a very short period of time. If Guam were a community located within a state on the U.S. mainland, the people in that community would not allow this to happen without a commitment from the federal government and the Congress to provide the resources to help us prepare. And yet, there's been no mention, no financial commitment, no resources dedicated, other than some small planning money for the governor's office and the port authority for this buildup. Why is that so? Is that because we are really not full-fledged Americans, and we are two-thirds American? Is that because we don't vote for president? Is that because we're more than 9,000 miles away from the U.S. mainland? Is that why we're not getting the same level of attention that any bona fide community in the U.S. mainland would get if they were asked to host such a massive increase in their population, and a substantial, substantial increase in the military presence in their community? We're not asking for anything more or less than our fellow Americans would expect in the U.S. mainland. And this resolution really brings this to the attention of our president, President Obama, of our Congress, composed of the House and the Senate of the United States, of our leaders in the executive branch of the federal government, that don't take us for granted, consider our legitimate concerns, and respond accordingly. Now, in drafting this resolution, the members of this legislature have defined what the issues are in the DEIS, the major issues that we believe require remediation. And these are the same issues that the people of Guam, from all sectors of life, have brought forward through various hearings and testimonies over the last month and a half. Not just before this legislature, but before Jigpo itself, when it conducted its hearings around the island, and before governor's activities, governor's hearings. We are not developing this resolution in isolation of our people. This resolution is fueled by the sincere sentiments of the people of Guam. Now, of course, we recognize that you have all varieties and all levels of different types of support or non-support for the military buildup. There certainly are those in our community that do not want the buildup at all, and that there are those in our community that want the buildup despite the impact, the negative impacts it might have on certain aspects of our lives. And then there are the middle-of-the-rollers, the roaders who say, and I'm one of those, I'm not against the buildup, but I want it to be win-win for all people, for the civilian community and the military community that will call Guam home. That is not an unreasonable position to take. This buildup has to be fair and equitable to the people of Guam, all the people of Guam that call Guam home, and that includes the military community. We want them to have a good experience here, when they're based on Guam. We want them to enjoy interacting with our people, enjoying our island. And what will accentuate that is to ensure that this buildup is fair to the civilians, respectful of our island, and helpful to the military community that will call Guam home. That's what I see as the heart and soul of this resolution. Now, I think it's a real achievement for us to have gone through these 11,000 pages of the draft EIS document, and decipher, along with the testimonies presented in various venues by the people of Guam, to decipher what the major concerns are, and to agree on what those concerns are, and to agree on what the solutions are to address those concerns. And I'd like the people of Guam to know that this resolution is not just saying, we don't agree with this, this, this and that. It gives a concern, it defends and explains why this is a concern, and it provides a remedy, a solution to resolve the concern. If the readers of this resolution in the federal government, including our president, the members of the Congress, members of the House, the members of the Cabinet, and our military friends read the resolution, they will see that our concerns are legitimate on behalf of the people of Guam, and our remedies are solid. I stand very proud of this resolution, and proud of each member of this legislature for coming together to develop this resolution. And you know, Madam Speaker, there are other issues that concern us that are not in the resolution, but each of us individually as senators of this legislature, I'm certain will present our concerns under our name individually to the Joint Guam Program Office before February 17, Wednesday, the deadline to submit comments to the draft environmental impact statement documents. So there'll be more information that the people of Guam will hear from us on other matters that are not included in the resolution. But the resolution- But the resolution represents the primary, serious concerns, and I believe well represents our responsibility as members of this legislature to objectively represent the interests of every man, every woman, and every child who calls Guam home. I ask, Madam Speaker, that our President, that the members of Congress and the Senate of the United States, that the Cabinet members in the executive branch, that officials in the Department of Defense, Department of Navy, the Guam Joint Program Office carefully read this resolution and respond accordingly. Give us the opportunity to sit down with you, Mr. President, your Cabinet members, members of Congress, to really help develop a military buildup plan that will work in all of our interests, in all the interests of the people of Guam and our military representatives. That's what I'm hoping will be the outcome of this resolution. I also, Madam Speaker, would like to invite our governor to join us and our Congresswoman to join us in supporting this resolution and making known their commitment to the overall best interests of the people of Guam. I thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Gafferts. On the motion, Senator Tina Rose Munna-Barnes, is she? Can somebody please call her? If there's anybody who would like to speak in the motion, can you please raise your hands and I'll record them. I have Senator Blas after Senator Barnes.
I apologize, Madam Speaker. I know I was up on the agenda, but there's a pending bill going on right now that I co-sponsored and I was gonna be given the opportunity, so can I just go out and give my time right up now and then come back to that?
Not a problem. Senator Blas?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, first off, I want to applaud you and the Chairman and the Committee on Rules and the main sponsor to this resolution for the call for cooperation, collaboration that has occurred over the last week, to be able to produce this product, which I feel really provides a very succinct and expressive sentiment on how the people of Guam feel of this military buildup and some of the concerns. And mind you, although this is 19 pages long, they did an outstanding and a very commendable job in being able to make things as accurate and as succinct as possible, not to be redundant, but more importantly is to get to the point. Madam Speaker, I recognize what this resolution is for, you know, and this resolution basically is our, this body's official response or official statement to the draft environmental impact study that's being conducted. But, you know, along those lines, let's think back of how we got to this point. You know, let's think back about to the time when, four or five years ago, when it was first announced that the Department of Defense was planning on moving 8,000, or a contingent of Marines, to Guam as a result of their realignment and activities. And at that time, too, there was the speculation as to the amounts that, of the amounts that are going to be spent here, but more importantly, the amounts that are going to be able to be collected here as a result of this activity. There was a lot of excitement, there was fever, there was anticipation. You know, one of the things that I always brought up, I brought up the first time I heard it, and I continue to bring it up today, is the question that I had is, what about the quality of life for the people of Guam? And what about those issues that still aren't going, haven't been resolved? The response has always been, "Oh, don't worry, the quality of life is going to improve." And now, you know, the issues will be able to be, well, no, correct. With regards to those issues, those issues are not actually something that are related to the military buildup, and so therefore, you're gonna have to go to other agencies that are related to those issues and get with them. And that really bothered me then. Then, as the years go by, we find out it's not 8,000. Then later on, we find out there may be 16,000, maybe 18,000. Now, 79,000 people. In a matter of four, five short years, we went from 8,000 to 79,000 people. And instead of Guam's economic prosperity increasing as a result of those numbers, realistically, what have we got? How have we benefited so far? What commitments have been made to us? Who's going to burden, who's going to shoulder this? There's a lot of questions that still need to be answered. And it's not just 8,000 Marines. It's 8,000 Marines and, what, 1,200 Air Force personnel, and 1,800 Navy personnel, and 600 Army personnel? In other words, an issue that was brought up in the course of the week by one of our colleagues that also bothers me is, this 11,000-page document is a combination of a number of EISs that we are expected to comment on in this protected timeframe? Madam Speaker, let's go through this document. I agree with almost every point, if not every, I agree, let me qualify that, let me restate that. I agree with every point here, but I think there's something missing here, of which, right now, I'm sitting here and, once I'm done, if you permit me the opportunity, as when I'm complete with it, to stand again and proffer an amendment to include further language in this resolution, to address the unresolved issues, more appropriately, as a finding. I'm looking at it right now, in my draft here, I has it as an amendment to add now, a finding number 12 to the resolution. And my basis for this is that in Volume 7, Chapter 3 of the DEIS, on page 55, under the subtitle "Social-Cultural Issues," it states the following: "The political importance of some true moral issues would likely recede as the militarization of Guam is stabilized at something close to present levels." The political importance of the true moral issues would likely recede as the militarization of Guam is stabilized. That's a very scary statement, because if you were to break up that statement, there's a number of things here. The political importance of true moral issues, that it would recede, and then the militarization of Guam? What are we becoming? You know, like yesterday, I, at the behest of the request of our colleague from PD, Senator BJ, I went to his YouTube video, and you know, there was a statement that was made by the GVB manager, Jerry Perez, that it is GVB's hope that we can continue to say, "Come to our paradise island, come to our beautiful island, see our scenes, see our beaches, enjoy our people, eat our food." Oh, and by the way, we have a military base. But what we're getting at right now is Guam is a military base, and it's got beaches, and it's got good food. Now, ma'am, you know, when I read this, and as far as that our issues would recede by the militarization, this is their language. And then it says, "is stabilized at something close to present levels." My colleagues, I tell you what, when our population increases by over 20%, things aren't going to be stabilized to present levels. There's going to be a new level. And that scares me. And to think that our war reparations, to think that the injustices or the land grabbing that occurred after World War II, and to think that the amounts owed by the federal government for our costs incurred for the services we provide under the Compact of Free Association, to think that those issues are going to recede, to think that we're going to say after this, all this is done, that, "Oh, okay, you don't have to, we don't have to discuss that anymore. It's a moot issue now." Thank you very much. We're gonna do that? You know, Madam Speaker, when I testified at one of the hearings, the DEIS hearings for Jigpo, more specifically, the one they had up at Ukuru High School, I testified to the offense that I took to this statement in behalf of the people. I testified to the offense and to the demoralization that probably is occurring with our manomko, who are still waiting after 65 years for a simple, "I'm sorry." And "thank you for your loyalty." Because they believe, because the Department of Defense believes that as a result of their militarization of my island, that it's no longer going to become an issue? And the reason why I'm gonna proffer that amendment is because I want to make it known. I want to make sure that whoever receives this resolution is absolutely, it's known to them that, no, what you intend to do to our island, what you intend to do to our people, is not going to take away anything that our people deserve. You tell me how this militarization is going to help those in their 80s and their 90s right now. Tell me now how this is going, those people probably won't even be around by the time this is done. And they're gonna benefit from this? I'd express my disappointment, too, and I hope, and I want to put, the reason why I want to put this in there is because I've been disappointed with our Congresswoman in being able to accept the compromises, if you will, over the last couple of years, when she should have stood there and said, "Wait a minute. We have been pushing for these war claims, we have been pushing for the proper reimbursement for a number of years. I want, we want it addressed now." I'm placing it in this resolution, and based on her promise, now she's gonna do it. So ma'am, with that, again, I'm structuring the amendment. If you can give me the opportunity, and I won't, I've already spoke on it, I'll just introduce it at a later time, but give me an opportunity so that I can come back to it.
Yes, there's...
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
I would allow that. As a matter of fact, I think the staff is currently working on it. On the motion, I recognize the Vice Speaker, Senator Cruz.
Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this resolution, but I want it clearly understood that my support is tepid at best, because though this is 19 pages, I want to advise the body that my office has already sent to Jigpo almost 90 individual comments on various portions of the DEIS that I have grave questions about. Also, at every Jigpo meeting, I took my five minutes and addressed a specific portion of the DEIS that I thought was grossly deficient and needed to be rewritten. And at four of the five meetings that the Congresswoman had, I again rose and took my five minutes to voice various issues. It would take me the rest of the afternoon to reiterate... It would take me the rest of the afternoon to reiterate all of the, and into the night, all the objections that I have to the buildup and the fact that it needs, that this DEIS needs to be completely redone and resubmitted to us. But I'd just like to rise at this point to say that there are some very grave areas that need to be addressed. Number one, I am diametrically opposed to the destruction of one head of coral. And I am, I can't even find a word to say how opposed I am to the thought that thirty-nine acres of coral is going to be destroyed. There is no word in the English language to describe how opposed I am to that idea. I am very concerned about the fact that this plans to do any dredging in Apur Harbor in light of the fact that by their own admission, the military has not done core testing to the depths of which they're planning on dredging, and they're only admitting that they're only tested the top one inch of the seafloor there. There's no way of knowing what is under there. In the example I tried to use, Madam Speaker, is in my office, I wanted to take up the carpet and put down some new carpet, but when I picked up the corner, I realized that there was tile down there and that this ugly carpet had been glued to it. And when I asked why that was done, I was told this, probably because there's asbestos in that tile, and if you pull up the carpet, pull up the tile to put in this new carpet that you want, you may never be able to move back into your office because you've messed with the asbestos in the floor. My concern is, is that any dredging of Apur Harbor will spread all, what we don't know is, is in the sediment, twenty, thirty, forty feet down that they're planning on dredging. So I cannot, in spite of this resolution and my support for it, have anything to do with or any kind of even tacit support for that idea. I have since the very first day of this buildup, Madam Speaker, kept insisting that the port is not the major issue with this buildup, it's the hospital. And this DEIS is grossly deficient in addressing the needs for the hospital. It mentions we're gonna need nineteen new doctors and a hundred and twenty-one new nurses. It doesn't mention the fact that for the last several months, in spite of the fact that PDN changed its policy on using code red in the front page, most of us hadn't realized that over the last several months, they've been in, at a hundred percent and people have been waiting, but we have been so used to seeing red and not, and since they changed it to blue, that we weren't in a very dire situation at the hospital. I called PDN last week and I said, "Why did you guys change it?" So now they're putting the red back so that we'll notice it. But the thing is, is the hospital cannot take care of one more person when ten of our people are waiting for a bed today. How much more if there were eighty thousand more people on this island, or even take out the military and just say thirty thousand people on the outside? There's just absolutely no way of being able to address that. There's been no commitment by the United States to build us a new wing, in spite of the fact that the Congresswoman was very proud of announcing that four hundred and forty million has been appropriated to build a new naval hospital with forty-four beds at ten million dollars a bed. The hospital here has been saying it just wants a hundred beds at a million dollars a bed or a hundred million dollars. There's been no appropriation or any commitment by the federal government to address that. There's been no commitment by the federal government to say that it will provide us all the doctors that we need. We all know how difficult it's been over the last several years to attract doctors to Guam. Even our own kids don't want to come back. So that area alone should be enough reason to say no action on this buildup. The mental health issue is another area that I think needs to be addressed, Madam Speaker. And I know I had been saying for over a year that military personnel have been using our mental health facilities, but I didn't get confirmation of that until last week when Dr. Lighthouser testified that twenty percent of the clientele at mental health are military personnel who go to mental health and go to our private practitioners outside because they don't want their command to find out that they're having psychological and mental problems. And the impact is going to be completely, well, I mean, we're ready to be in receivership in the next, in the next couple of weeks. This influx of additional personnel will completely take our mental health department down and deprive our people of what little mental health facilities and services that we can provide. The educational system has to, the section has to be completely redone. And so, I mean, I could go on, on various other areas. I mean, I've had an exchange of correspondence with the Congresswoman in this last week. If this buildup is going to go through, and now that they're pulling out all the stops to bring the President out here to try to convince us that we should do this and send Senator Webb out here to try to convince us that we need to move forward on this thing, I want to make sure that if this is going through, which I do not support, if it's going to go through, I want to make sure that every single dollar that can accrue to Guam's treasury and to Guam's economy should be provided. In one letter that I sent to the Congresswoman, I insisted or recommended to her that she introduce legislation to make sure that all contracts, all fifteen billion dollars of contracts for this buildup are signed here on Guam, include in the provisions of the contract that Guam is the citus of the contract, that everything related to that contract is going to go through the banks of Guam so that we can get our share of what should be. And I don't care if Halliburton gets a five billion dollar contract, if they're gonna gift their CFO or their CEO or COO, whatever, each a ten million dollar bonus for getting a five billion dollar contract, I want thirty-five percent of that paid off to our revenue and taxation before they send them their seven million. I want three million in our treasury from each one of those people before it goes off. I want every single penny paid here in taxes that can possibly be paid. The only thing the Congresswoman has been willing to do in her legislation is to have a report done. That's not what I want. I want to make sure that the law is clear, that every penny that is due Guam is received by Guam, and every effort is made by the Congress and by DOD to make sure that Guam is not denied a penny. In the last couple of days, I've had an exchange of correspondence with her about looking at the statistics. Dr. Ruwan from the university pointed out a chart that I hadn't noticed because I read the DEIS on my Kindle and the charts don't come up clearly on my Kindle. But just the fact that it's pretty clear that anybody who's taken DI math would know that forty-five percent of an income is greater than twenty percent. And from the chart, it shows that the H-two laborers only spend twenty percent of their income in the local economy, whereas the local workers spent at least forty-five percent of their income in the local economy. I wrote to the Congresswoman and asked her, would she reconsider her opposition to the Abukambi Amendment? So that we could have more local workers as opposed to H-two laborers? And I pointed out to her in the math on that chart, that Guam stands to lose, using the numbers that they published, three hundred and ninety-eight million dollars of direct infusion into Guam's economy. That's just the first direct impact. Not talking about indirect impact, not talking about the multiplier, but just the amount of money that they spend in the economy. I'm not going to get into the debate of what the multiplier is, but I'm just saying that just from what the numbers that they had, it would be three, loss of three hundred and ninety-eight million dollars. And from the chart, it also shows that the local workers make more money than the H-two workers. And so, if in fact, we have more local workers and they're spending forty-five percent, the loss of this economy would be greater than the three hundred and seventy-eight million that I had mentioned, and maybe closer to the half billion dollar mark that I think we're losing just in direct impact. That doesn't include the multiplier. So there are very major issues that need to be addressed, Madam Speaker. I just rise to support this body in the issues that it's presenting. And I also want to make sure that there is one provision, I want to thank the body for including the one provision that I've asked for, and that is to include in this that the presence of the military here, the expanded presence of the military here, will not adversely affect the efforts by the Visitors Bureau and the tourism industry to try to get visa waivers for China and Russia to come to Guam. They spend four to sometimes ten times more than Japanese do. That's the experience that they've had in the Siamai. And we want to have them down here to spend that kind of money in our economy and to diversify our tourism industry. And I want to thank all of the committee and Senator Respecho and the authors of this resolution for allowing me to get that one provision in there of saying that if you're going to come, then we want your support in getting, in making sure that our tourism industry can and will survive after the buildup is over and the economy takes its bust. We've got to figure out a way of being able to sustain ourselves, and I really do think that the tourism industry is the only way that we're gonna be able to do that. So I could go on, Madam Speaker, but suffice it to say that I will support the resolution with major, major reservations, but I want to support us in having a united voice to Congress saying, there are major problems that you need to address. The numbers that we've listed are at least some of the most major ones that I've addressed in my personal comments to Jigpo, but I'm willing to support the body on this one, and I thank you for including the provisions about the coral and the hospital and mental health. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Vice Speaker. On the motion, I have Senator Tai Tegri.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. For the past sixty days or more, the people of Guam have spoken to the contents of the draft environmental impact statement. I thank the people of Guam for voicing their concerns. Sidus Masi, to all those who spoke out at the various meetings this past month, because this document would not be possible without you. I stand with my fellow colleagues in support of this resolution. For too long, our people have asked to give up their land at the cost of our culture and our heritage, all in the name of national security. I say this stops now and it stops with Resolution two seven five. Today, the federal government controls more than thirty percent of our entire island. They have restricted us from their bases, forced us to increase our population, hidden beneath compact impact monies, and time and time again. The people of Guam have accepted and adopted these demands. There are countless other defense installations throughout the world that successfully operate today. They do not require more land or greater sacrifice. I believe we ought to raise this point and demand further research. But let there be no mistake, we are patriotic people. We are the only American soil that have been occupied by a foreign force for an extended period of time. And still, the people of Guam have held fast to the principles of democracy, freedom, and the foundation of our country. Our enlisted ratio is the highest per capita, and the sons and daughters of Guam have made the ultimate sacrifice and paid with their life to defend the country. Today, nearly a third of our island remains under DOD control, and the draft environmental impact statement asks for more. Economic opportunity and defense posturing should not require us to surrender our ability to sustain our resources or destroy the natural beauty of our island. For these reasons, I believe we must work diligently to ensure this buildup remains within the military's current footprint. We must stand firm on our land condemnation position and offer more financial and environmentally sound solutions. Throughout this process, our federal partners have reiterated their intent to be good neighbor. Good neighbor. I say we hold them to this promise. Good neighbors look out for one another, and they share their resources. But the only message we have gotten from this military is, we want to take your land, stifle your culture, kill your heritage, destroy your limited natural resources, and you will suffer these consequences. In a few short years, the US Department of Defense is slated to begin a multi-billion dollar relocation of military personnel to our island. The very same island where each day is a struggle between insufficient funds and a lack of resources and manpower, coupled with decades, decades of old problems that plague our transportation, infrastructure, our only civilian hospital, our Ailing School System, and other high priority government services. Our people have been asked to endure a population surge in excess of eighty thousand laborers, contractors, military personnel, and foreign investment companies. Eighty thousand people in five years, and yet we are forced to seek grant funding from a multitude of federal agencies who always seem to make Guam last on their list of appropriations and first on their list of burdens. This is why I wholeheartedly support this resolution's call for an ambiguous budget, and we must pursue additional measures to ensure our people are not short-changed. Give us the tool to make up the buildup work for Guam, or the buildup may not work at all. This generation is facing the greatest challenge in Guam's history. We are being asked to give up more land, erase our culture, stifle our heritage. But this price is too high, and we were elected to protect our interests and be in the stewards of our island and her people. Though I fully support Resolution two seven five dash thirty, I remain concerned this document may lack lasting impact on the military. lasting impact on the military buildup process and the final draft environmental impact statement. While we as leaders work each day to mitigate these problems with thousands of public and private sector workers who move this island each day, I believe we must do more to strengthen our position on the military buildup with hard factual evidence. We cannot expect this resolution alone will be our only, only bargaining chip without the federal government, nor can we assure that listing these concerns on federal hard stock letterhead will ensure that they are going to address the final EIS. Resolution 275 is a critical step in this process, though. But I believe it's the only, the beginning of a work we have ahead of us. This resolution again is only the beginning of the work that we have in front of us. We have got to bolster our efforts to strengthen our position. We must gain national inter, we must gain national and international attention, garner support from environmental, historical preservation, and human rights organizations to help us to be heard thousands of miles away. So that at the end of the day, our people will know that every avenue has been explored and every possibility has been exhausted. I thank all my colleagues for their work, their ideas, their concerns, their issues, and to the staff that assisted us in preparing this resolution, but most especially to those who gave no fear, our people of Guam, who stepped up and made their concerns loud and clear to this body. Sidus Massey.
Thank you very much, Senator Tai Tegri. I have Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes on the amendment.
Sidus Massey, Madam Speaker, thank you for giving me the opportunity to stand here and speak in reference, in reference to Resolution Number 275-30. First of all, Madam Speaker, I'd like to thank my colleagues, Senator Respecho and Senator Gutherson, of course you yourself, Madam Speaker, for also sponsoring the resolution and giving me the opportunity to continue to jump on the bandwagon and, and speak about this and, but making me a part of signing this resolution as, as part of the sponsorship. This Resolution 275-30 again will reiterate what we want, and it says it's relative to presenting to President Barack Obama and the Congress of the United States, the sentiments expressed by the people of Guam relative to the draft environmental impact statement for Guam, for the Guam military buildup, and to providing a list of the common ground issues without adequate addressing of which the government of Guam shall demand no action be taken on certain elements of the buildup, and to restating that Guam's agenda of priority concerns on federal territorial issues must be addressed concurrently with the buildup. Most importantly, Madam Speaker, I'd like to take the time to extend my undangka lunas Sidus Massey to all the people who came out and testified at the various meetings held by, of course, the governor, Jigpo, and at the public hearings held by this body. You, the people of Guam, who continue to call this island home, will without a doubt be adversely impacted by the impending military buildup. I want to thank you again for voicing your concerns, concerns that I'm sure are echoed in the voices of many others in the community who didn't have the opportunity to speak, and including myself, share those, and echo those sentiments that you have shared. As you know, Madam Speaker, the people of Guam, and we continue to say that we were given 90 days to review this voluminous report that consisted of over 11,000 pages of information of various proposed actions and adverse impacts associated with this action. Much of the information, I believe in my heart, is inadequate and fails to address significant concerns of, that the people of Guam have. For example, and I'm going to bring examples to the table here, it fails to mention military use plans placing the burden of meat on the government of Guam. The government of, the government of Guam, its agencies, and the people of Guam were not included, were not included in the processing regarding this military buildup. Another example that I'd like to bring to the forefront is something that I've been working closely with is Volume Four, and in Chapter Nine, regarding the transit aircraft carrier birthing that everybody's talking about, the government of Guam was not involved in that April 2007 stakeholders meeting, and I want to bring that up to the forefront. And existing baseline data for conducting recreational resource impact analysis were compiled based solely on the information obtained through natural resource planners at, and I will tell you, not with the government of Guam, but with Anderson Air Force Base and, and the park rangers. And you know, because as Oversight Chair of Parks and Recreation, because Department of Parks and Recs was not involved, for me personally, the information lacked the firsthand observation and perspective of the local community. We live here. This is our island. The very community to be affected by this military buildup, and yet, no voice. And as a result, the information lacked the cultural and historical significance of those recreational resources. In reviewing this draft EIS, Madam Speaker, there was one phrase that was mentioned throughout the report that was a source of great disapproval, disagreement, and underscored a feeling of resentment toward the federal government. And I say that resentment towards the federal government because the phrase they used, Madam Speaker, was that this whole impact in, and I'm just talking about Volume Four, over the word, the quote, "No significant impact." No significant impact to our island, no significant impact. For example, in Volume Four, which specifically discusses the aircraft birthing, these words are mentioned, you want to know how many times? That's one volume out of 10, 11,000 pages. Not 10 times, not 50 times, not 100 times, not 300 times, but over 500 times, one volume. No significant impact. How do you tell the people of Guam that the construction of the new deep draft war for the birthing of a transit nuclear aircraft carried, carrier which is manned by over 5,600 military personnel is not going to have a significant adverse impact in their lives? When, when logic, pure logic will dictate that it will? No significant impact? Or, Madam Speaker, that the leaching of contaminants into the soil caused by the construction of shore side structures is not a significant impact, resulting in the loss of agriculturally productive soil? Or that 160 pounds of hazardous substances will leak, spill, or release in our soil, surface water, groundwater, and air during just 63, now just 63 birthing days a year is of no significant adverse impact? Or, Madam Speaker, I'll keep bringing up these examples, or that the dredging of 2.3 million square feet, 2.3 million, no exaggeration, square feet, I know last night we were saying, how many acres was that? I guess you'd have to convert 2.3 million square feet. Okay, 39 acres, good job. Of our seafloor to accommodate this transit nuclear aircraft carrier birthing? In this impact, the western shore and the big blue reef, both completely covered with living coral to the depths of 60 feet, resulting in the loss of habitat due to vegetation removal during construction? You yourself, Madam Speaker, you yourself, you were carrying your grandson, right, in that interview about a week, that was a week ago, right? And you had personal take on going down there and looking at that live coral, and you also noted that in that area alone, here on our beautiful island of Guam, there was over 100 species, and I'm not exaggerating, right? You're nodding your head, yes, 100 species of live coral living there. God, I thought Palau had lots of cor, Guam ourselves, the beauty that we have here, our island being so beautiful, our waters, our, that coral there being so beautiful, there's 100 different species. And you even quoted that in the Caribbean as it was compared to, only had what, 50? 50, 55, right? 55 to 100? And there's no significant impact? Madam Speaker, this Resolution 275-30 acknowledges these concerns. This resolution is also, also is requesting that we, the people of Guam, be given a voice in the process by, by allowing our island of Guam full voting rights in the U.S. House of Representatives on all matters relative to the military buildup. This military buildup will directly affect each and every one of us. So it is only right and fair and justice dictates no less than to be a full active participant in that process. Is there anything wrong with that? To be that active participant in the process because it is us who lives here? You know, historically, such requests have fallen on deaf ears, because this is no stranger to us. It has fallen to deaf ears in Washington, yet we persist and remain committed to our voice, to the voices of our people. We deserve to be heard. More importantly, it says that the federal government DOD, if you are coming, if you're going to come, talk to the very people who will be directly affected by this buildup. Listen to the people's pain and suffering. Listen, listen to their concerns. Include us in the process. I've never deterred from that. Include us in the process and consider our input. Is that a hard demand? Is that a hard request? You know, Madam Speaker, I've said it over and over, folks have, you know, and folks have asked me, "So you know, Senator, are you saying that the military buildup is bad for Guam?" My response has always been, I've never shied away from the fact that I'm a part of that military family. I've never shied away from the fact that I have immediate family members, my husband, my son, my brother, my sister-in-law, my nieces, my nephews. I've always said that if we had to look at Guam and were we like in the perspective of being a, 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 um, an island who is patriotic, we don't fall in the 50% category, we don't fall in 75% category, we literally fall in almost the 90% category, whether we, whether we want to admit it or not. There's everyone here, Senator, the good Senator from Manila now, Senator Gutherson, spoke about her, her nephew being a part of that military family. And you know, we don't forget our brothers and sisters who are serving, those who are in the reserves, our veterans and their families, we have the highest per capita, and even those, Madam Speaker, that are employed with the military. What I want to say before my colleagues and before this august body and be, and to the listening audience out there, was that we have the right, and that there is a right way to the process, and that that process must be include not just Japan and the United It can't just include them, it's got to include us. It must address our concerns, we as a Tramoral family, we as a Tramoral Guam, we as the people of Guam. It must address our concerns, and we must remember that if you want to come to this house, you have to share in paying. I don't want to ask for aid, I want to ask for what rightfully belongs to Guam. Because this is our house. This is where we live, where we eat, where we sleep. And if this is a done deal, come to the table with us and share in the burdens that we have to pay for, that we have to work hard for, so that everybody can live here harmoniously. Is that a hard request to ask for? That we as a people want to be a part of that? Madam Speaker, I don't think so. I don't think that price, I, I told members of the diet as, as we were conversing, and we talked about the parallels and the similarities of what Okinawa had went through when they were negotiating in their milit, in the military buildup, and how they as a people were forgotten. I said to myself, "History repeating itself." I don't think it's a crime to ask, Madam Speaker, I really don't think it's a crime to ask that you come to the table in our house and you address our concerns and you work with us and share in the burden of having to accommodate if you're going to come here. Don't just take, take. Don't just take, 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 take. We are such a giving island. Come and work with us. I support this resolution and I want to thank you and the author, Senator Guthers, Senator Rispio, and everybody who really took the time to make the amendments so that we can voice this concern, the voice of the people. Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Munia Barnes. We're going to take a brief recess. The delegation from the Japan Diet are here, so we're going to be in a brief recess. Ask our colleagues if you can please, you know, join us up here. Senator Panglinen, can you join us as well? Senator Frank Blas, can you join us as well, please? Mr. Perry, since you're representing the Congresswoman, would you like to come and join us?
Oh, you're ready.
Okay. Anyway, I want to, I mean, our members here who have not met, I mean, I'm sure all of you've remembered Mr., the Diet member, Shimoji-san, and along with him, of course, is at Tomoko Abe. So the other members are, have proceeded, I guess, to the hotel to head towards the airport, so they're here for a very short time. What we wanted to do, we'd ask if you could come, was that we are currently in the process of discussing Resolution 275. And in the resolution, it is going to be presented to not just the President of the United States, members of Congress, the other heads of departments in the United States, the Prime Minister of Japan, and the Governor and the Congresswoman. And in this resolution, which is about 19 pages long, addresses the sentiments of the people of Guam about the buildup, so it gives you an idea of how the people feel, some of the shortfalls and, more importantly, some historical injustices in the past that we're requesting be resolved and ever removed from the table. And lastly, resolutions on what it is that we're requesting Congress to do for the executive branch and the legislative branch to intervene during this whole process. So we have with us around 10 copies to, to give you and the final version, we will definitely have it mailed to you and the, the members of the Diet and the Prime Minister. So Senator Rispio, Senator Guthers also is the primary sponsors. Senator Guthers chairs the Committee on Civil and Military Affairs and Senator Rispio chairs the Federal and Territorial Affairs as well. So can I ask both of you if you can make the presentation?
Firstly, I want to thank you and welcome you back to Guam. We understand, Mr. Shimoji-san, that your mission here is to ask the people of Guam, what is it we need as a result of this massive military buildup? You have done something that has, that has really touched us because what you're doing, the United States has yet to do. The United States has yet to ask the people of Guam what we want as a result of this buildup. So I join Speaker Wampad, Senator Guthers, and all members of the legislature to present to you this resolution, which would be shortly adopted officially by this legislature. But thank you for your support and thank you for your advocacy.
Thank you very much for the papers. Today, Congresswoman Abe and I, two members from the Japanese government's delegation have come here. Before this, we had a meeting with the Governor and before that, we have looked, seen all of the bases on Guam. I just want to make one comment. This agreement that the two governments of Japan and the United States have made is not an agreement only between the two national governments. There will be 8,000 Marines relocated from Okinawa and 9,000 dependents as well. This is not something that only the United States has decided, but it is an agreement between the two nations of Japan and the United States. Therefore, the Japanese shares an equal responsibility regarding this plan. So I believe that both myself and Congresswoman Abe share the responsibility to bring the voice of Guam to the Japanese Diet. So that's, first of all, that the history and the culture of Guam will be protected. That the nature of Guam will also be protected. And that the Guam, Guam's economy will continue to develop. So we will join our efforts in order to realize this, so what we can do from the Japanese side as well. So we hope to communicate with you deep, more deeply in the coming days so that we can reach a solution. Thank you very much.
I just want to say one place. The most important thing is your sentiment, your people's sentiment and your people's voice regarding this issue. So I and Shimoji will tell and this solution will send to our Prime Minister. I will do my best, thank you.
Thank you very much. Guam and Japan have had a very close relationship for a long, long time. We are honored when visitors from Japan come to Guam to experience our island, our culture, our people. The beauty of Guam is well-known in Japan, the hospitality of our people is well-known. We jointly have concerns about the military buildup and we are very pleased to hear that you understand our concerns and that you will articulate our concerns in Japan. We are loyal Americans, we love our country, but we want our country to be fair to the people of Guam and to respect our island with reference to this buildup. And we hope that you will take this message back to Japan and share it with the people of Japan. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
that the DEIS, should it proceed as presented to the people of Guam, will have on the lives of our people, and what we will face as a community in the years to come. So in that respect, one comment I heard was, "It includes everything, including the kitchen sink." Well, it is going to include each and every facet of our lives, and in that respect, it needs to, in terms of the presentation of what the military expansion will have on the people of Guam and our community, that it has to include what it will do to the kitchen sink. You know, the resolution also may be criticized that it doesn't play by the rules, that the rules require us to submit our comments to the DEIS process and the NIPA process, but in this whole presentation, I believe that the military itself has not played by the rules. And when it comes to who makes the rules, the military feels that since, because they have the guns, they can make the rules. And so we have no other option but to resort to, of course, following the rules, and each and every member of this body and each and every member of our community understand what those rules are, and the military and the process will be met with regards to submitting our comments on specific to the DEIS, and how the plans as outlined in the DEIS will affect our lives. But even the military still needs to go to Congress if they want to implement the DEIS as presented, when they get and if they get to a final DEIS and a record of decision that is signed by the Secretary of the Navy. They will have to go to Congress to get the funding to implement their plans. And so this resolution is in anticipation, and maybe it's our attempt to head 'em off at the pass, if you want to call it that, that when Congress gets the plan as finalized under the DEIS process, they will know what the concerns of this people, of the people of Guam are, as represented in this resolution, and they will be prepared. Our Congresswoman will have a record of the concerns as expressed by the people of Guam as outlined in this resolution. It will show not only the historical issues that remain on the table, and as the resolutions say, must not be taken off the table, in order to move forward on this process of trying to find a balance between our contribution to our nation's defense and the nation's contribution to the defense and the survival of the Chamorro's on Guam. One cannot incur without the other. We will not, again, be abandoned by the United States when the United States is the one that's invading the island. They abandoned us when the Japanese were invading the islands, and they did not meet their moral obligation to this community. They left Guam, left us to defend and fend for ourselves in the face of an invading enemy, and now they want to come back, and they want to replicate, in my estimation, the destruction to the community and our way of life that the invasion of World War II had, and they are not willing, as they've laid out in their plans, been willing to take responsibility and mitigate that. This is not a hostile invasion of, invasion by a hostile enemy. This is an invasion by people responsible and have responsibilities to the people of Guam and to the Chamorro people, as they themselves have obligated themselves to by agreeing to international law and charters. They recognize that in the DEIS. It is in the DEIS that they recognize their obligations, but they're not willing to meet those obligations. At least, the Department of Defense, in the formulation of its plans, is not willing to meet those obligations. And if they're not, then we have to go to the higher authority, and in this case, it's the Congress that is the higher authority, and that is why this resolution with all of its contents is absolutely appropriate, that it go to the Congress and outline these outstanding and historical issues that needs to be resolved. The DEIS says that they'll cause pollution, yet the military has not finished, and in most cases, has not even started cleaning up the pollution from the end of World War II, and the destruction to our environment that they have caused, that they recognize exists out there, that they have chronicled, documented, and placed evidence in files that these things exist, and that the destruction of the environment and the health and danger it poses to the people of Guam is real and factual, and yet they have not started cleaning it up. And they want to destroy the environment and cause pollution, as they say in the DEIS, even more. Well, we say, "No more. No further action on additional pollution to the lands and the people of Guam that threaten the health and safety of the people of Guam until you finish cleaning up the last pollution. No more destruction to the environment and the ecology of Guam until you have mitigated that." One of the things that the DEIS has is, they do provide, in some instances, mitigation for the destruction of our environment. The problem is, is that they're using mitigation now, and will destroy the mitigation that they've provided in past EISs in lands they've set aside. Now they're going to destroy those lands they set aside for mitigation to mitigate the destruction that they're causing with this additional spanning. The DEIS, as we both have followed very closely, Mr. Speaker, and followed the roadshow, I think, as our Congresswoman so graciously dubbed us, we are the perfect attendance recipients of the perfect attendance award to her forums on the DEIS. And it is a good thing that I think we had perfect attendance, because in a lot of those forums, the misunderstanding that's occurred with regards to the presentations and the representations made by the military representatives, and the errors in those presentations and representations made, as to what is contained in the DEIS and its effect on the people of Guam, was beyond belief. And it is absolutely clear that there are more holes in the DEIS than there are potholes in our roads, that the conclusions, the methodologies, the assumptions that are made in the DEIS of what it will have on Guam and the mitigation that they will implement are so bad that they border on ridiculous. We see, for one instance, and that they will want, they want to, and they will, they're saying that they need Paget and the surrounding areas for a firing range, and that they recognize that Paget and the surrounding areas are recreational areas that are accessed by the people of Guam, and that when they take Paget, if they take Paget, if we let them take Paget, that access to these outdoor recreational areas will be restricted, and the people of Guam will be denied of outdoor recreation, and it may have an effect on their health. And their solution to mitigation is that the people of Guam then should seek other recreational activities, perhaps indoors. I mean, that is, I couldn't believe that they were serious. I thought the next page was going to contain a cartoon. But that's the type of information and the type of solution and mitigation and alternatives that are presented in this DEIS. This DEIS, by many in our community, is being touted as an economic boom, and that we need the expansion of the military to sustain our economy and provide opportunities for our people. But with everything comes a cost, and the DEIS and the military, in presenting the DEIS, have used information that is outright wrong with regards to the economic impact and benefits of this DEIS. We just saw our office, as the Office of Finance and Budget, performed an analysis of the assumptions used to quantify the economic benefits. And when we did that, we found, of course, that the results of the military's assumptions and methodology, which they did not put in the DEIS, so we had to guess, we had to re-engineer and deconstruct their formula to arrive at the numbers they did. And when But in this whole presentation, I believe that the military itself has not played by the rules. And when it comes to who makes the rules, the military feels that since because they have the guns, they can make the rules. And so we have no other option but to resort to, of course, following the rules and each and every member of this body and each and every member of our community understand what those rules are. And the military and the process will be met with regards to submitting our comments on specific to the DEIS and how the plans as outlined in the DEIS will affect our lives. But even the military still needs to go to Congress if they want to implement the DEIS as presented. When they get and if they get to a final DEIS and a record of decision that is signed by the Secretary of the Navy, they will have to go to Congress to get the funding to implement their plans. And so this resolution is in anticipation, and maybe it's our attempt to head them off at the pass, if you want to call it that, that when Congress gets the plan as finalized under the DEIS process, they will know what the concerns of this people of the people of Guam are as represented in this resolution, and they will be prepared. Our Congresswoman will have a record of the concerns as expressed by the people of Guam as outlined in this resolution. It will show not only the historical issues that remain on the table and, as the resolution say, must not be taken off the table, in order to move forward on this process of trying to find a balance between our contribution to our nation's defense and the nation's contribution to the defense and the survival of the Chamorro's on Guam. One cannot incur without the other. We will not again be abandoned by the United States when the United States is the one that's invading the island. They abandoned us when the Japanese were invading the islands, and they did not meet their moral obligation to this community. They left Guam, left us to defend and fend for ourselves in the face of an invading enemy. And now they want to come back, and they want to replicate, in my estimation, the destruction to the community and our way of life that the invasion of World War II had. And they are not willing, as they've laid out in their plans, been willing to take responsibility and mitigate that. This is not a hostile invasion of a invasion by a hostile enemy. This is an invasion by people responsible and have responsibilities to the people of Guam and to the Chamorro people as they themselves have obligated themselves to by agreeing to international law and charters. They recognize that in the DEIS. It is in the DEIS that they recognize their obligations, but they're not willing to meet those obligations. At least the Department of Defense in the formulation of its plans is not willing to meet those obligations. And if they're not, then we have to go to the higher authority. And in this case, it's the Congress that is the higher authority, and that is why this resolution with all of its contents is absolutely appropriate that it go to the Congress and outline these outstanding and historical issues that needs to be resolved. The DEIS says that they'll cause pollution, yet the military has not finished and in most cases has not even started cleaning up the pollution from the end of World War II and the destruction to our environment that they have caused, that they recognize exists out there, that they have chronicled, documented, and placed evidence in files that these things exist, and that the destruction of the environment and the health and danger it poses to the people of Guam is real and factual. And yet they have not started cleaning it up. And they want to destroy the environment and cause pollution, as they say in the DEIS, even more. Well, we say no more. No further action on additional pollution to the lands and the people of Guam that threaten the health and safety of the people of Guam until you finish cleaning up the last pollution. No more destruction to the environment and the ecology of Guam until you have mitigated that. One of the things that the DEIS has is they do provide, in some instances, mitigation for the destruction of our environment. The problem is, is that they're using mitigation now and will destroy the mitigation that they've provided in past EISs in lands they've set aside. Now they're going to destroy those lands they set aside for mitigation to mitigate the destruction that they're causing with this additional spanning. The DEIS, as we both have have followed very closely, Mr. Speaker, and followed the roadshow, I think as our Congresswoman so graciously dubbed us, we are the perfect attendance recipients of the perfect attendance award to her forums on the DEIS. And it is a good thing that I think we had perfect attendance, because in a lot of those forums, the misunderstanding that's occurred with regards to the presentations and the representations made by the military representatives and the errors in those presentations and representations made as to what is contained in the DEIS and its effect on the people of Guam was beyond belief. And it is absolutely clear that there are more holes in the DEIS than there are potholes in our roads. That the conclusions, the methodologies, the assumptions that are made in the DEIS of what it will have on Guam and the mitigation that they will implement are so bad that they border on ridiculous. We see for one instance and that they will want, they want to and they will, they're saying that they need Paget and the surrounding areas for a firing range, and that they recognize that Paget and the surrounding areas are recreational areas that are accessed by the people of Guam, and that when they take Paget, if they take Paget, if we let them take Paget, that access to these outdoor recreational areas will be restricted. And the people of Guam will be denied of outdoor recreation, and it may have an effect on their health. And their solution to mitigation is that the people of Guam then should seek other recreational activities, perhaps indoors. I mean, that is, I couldn't believe that they were serious. I thought the next page was going to contain a cartoon. But that's the type of information and the type of solution and mitigation and alternatives that are presented in this DEIS. This DEIS, by many in our community, is being touted as an economic boom, and that we need the expansion of the military to sustain our economy and provide opportunities for our people. But with everything comes a cost. And the DEIS and the military in presenting the DEIS have used information that is outright wrong with regards to the economic impact and benefits of this DEIS. We just saw our office, as the Office of Finance and Budget, performed an analysis of the assumptions used to quantify the economic benefits. And when we did that, we found, of course, that the results of the military's assumptions and methodology, which they did not put in the DEIS, so we had to guess, we had to re-engineer and deconstruct their formula to arrive at the numbers they did. And when we did that, we, of course, found out that one of the basic elements that they use to determine the economic impact is the multiplier effect of expenditure in the economy. And we could see very clearly that the multiplier effect that they use was not what is normally have been agreed upon by many financial experts in our community as that that occurs on Guam. And so what the end result is, is that when they tell us that we're going to collect an additional hundred, two hundred, three hundred million dollars in tax revenues based on the expenditures, we find that really it's about fifty percent to sixty percent less than what they're telling us in the DEIS. So when they tell us it's going to be this huge economic boom, we find that the resulting requirements to support the services needed by this additional people coming to Guam clearly outweighs more, more, requires an expenditure greater than the additional tax revenues. So it's going to end up having caught, having the people of Guam pay for that and not the growth that pays for it, because it's just not enough. And these are the ways of looking at this resolution in terms of, and the DEIS. But what is most important is that we present these arguments, we cover all of our bases and cover all fronts with regards to ensuring that the DEIS as outlined needs to be placed in in a position that requires further study, further quantifications. A lot of the issues presented and the solutions are unquantifiable. We can't quantify those things. When they say it's not significant, no significant impact, what does that mean? It's not quantifiable. And if by the rules of NIPA and that process, when that is missing, when you're not able to determine that, when you're not able to quantify the effects, when you're not able to measure significance, then the DEIS needs to go back and account for those areas and resolve those unquantifiable conditions and needs to quantify them in order for the people of Guam to make substantive comments that are based on fact and not fiction, and that are based on on open and transparent assumptions and not hidden assumptions. And so this is where we find ourselves today with regards to this DEIS. We found that members of our community have devoted the time and the energy to play by the rules, to take apart this eleven thousand massive piece of document and play by the rules. But we all know that there is a chance, that history has proven, that they don't always play by the rules. And so just by chance, if they should, which I fully suspect will not play by the rules with regards to the DEIS process, then this resolution covers that option that they have and that alternative by going directly to the Congress and to the other decision makers in that chain, so that they know that when they're reviewing the final record of decision or the final DEIS, that there are these concerns that will not remain hidden, and that we will continue to force our other leaders on Guam to come to the plate, to support the wishes of the people of Guam, to support the work of the people of Guam and the many, many individuals in our community that have devoted, you know, countless hours to playing by the rules, that that effort doesn't get wasted, that that effort will ensure that when it comes time for those in position of power and authority, that all that effort will be brought to light and that the gate will not be open, that the destruction will not occur, that the plan will not be implemented until people play by the rules and ensure that the people of Guam have an opportunity to make the right decision based on the right information and all of the information and facts presented to them in a manner that they can interpret for themselves and then make informed decisions for how this military buildup will affect us and whether or not it is truly in our best interest based upon all the facts. And so I stand with other members of this body in support of this resolution, knowing that it may not be tied directly to the DEIS, but it certainly is part of the process that will ensure that that process doesn't get corrupted. And if it does, then we have a way of addressing the corruption of that process by ensuring that the political powers that will support that decision are aware of that corruption. Thank you, and Sidus Masie.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolinan. Are there, Senator Espaldón?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I wasn't intending to really say anything except with my vote. I stand in full support of this resolution. I figured that there were going to be many eloquent speakers, as proven so, on the, on this resolution, all the issues and perhaps all the flaws with the draft EIS and a lot of the concerns that have not been addressed. During the process of the public hearings, I think one of, one of the comments resonates constantly in my mind, and that is the problem of what was not included in the draft EIS. And that resonates very loud in my mind. There are a lot of things that were put, eleven thousand pages worth of issues put and and solutions, potential solutions out there and alternatives for this military buildup. And yet there were so many, there were probably twice as many pages that were not written in terms of other things that needed to be said, other issues that needed to be addressed. After hearing a lot of my colleagues speak on the matter, I felt it was only appropriate that I also stood up and made sure that everybody understood that I do rise in full support of this resolution. Mr. Speaker, this military buildup places our island at the very threshold of the point of no return. It's essential, much like the previous speaker said and noted that others have have commented on as well, that we throw in everything, including the kitchen sink, because once we go down this path of no return, there is no return. We need to address these situations, these issues that are before us today that have been with us for years and that are, and some that are new because of this military buildup. It is important that we voice our opposition, our objection, our analysis, our input, our solutions at this moment. It is appropriate that we address it not only to the Department of Defense, but to the very leaders of our nation, the President, Congress, the Senate, and everybody else. You know, when I was first, when I first came into office last term, I was visited by members of Jigpo and members of Department of Defense to basically familiarize myself with their plans with this buildup. They asked for my advice, and I said, well, since we're at the very early stages of this, there are probably some things that you could do, that the military could do, to really show that they're planned to be good neighbors, much as they stated to me. They want to be part of this community. They believe that this buildup was good for our island. They pointed out over and over it again that the economic benefit to our island is going to be so tremendous that we will prosper. My reply on one of those issues was that, well, then if that's the case, then here's how you might be able to get a little bit of community buy-in. If that is true, that there is going to be enough economic boom because of all this military spending, then it behooves them to help us out at the very central point in which we collect revenues. As you, Mr. Speaker, have stated many times in the press, revenue, Department of Revenue and Tax is very critical to make sure that we capture every single cent that is supposed to be due us from this military buildup. I emphasize the point that really, when you start talking about fifteen billion dollars worth of a, of an influx for this buildup, what's a couple million dollars worth of technology and training to really bring our Department of Revenue up to speed so we may be able to capture all that revenue that's supposed to come with us? Since then, three years later, nothing has happened. There has been no assistance from these people. I've been very dismayed about that. Another thing I said that might provide some buy-in from the community, knowing full well that they're putting a thirty-five to forty million dollar sports facility on their side of the property, that they spend perhaps several hundred thousand dollars, maybe even just up to a million dollars, to help us upgrade our facilities, our gymnasiums, our outdoor basketball courts, our baseball fields, help us with the lighting and things, that would also help create goodwill and buy-in amongst our community. Small things like that. Have they? They have not. I've made other recommendations, knowing full well that they had planned to perhaps look at property outside the fence and pursue that property for their own purposes, I put on the table, then why aren't we not made available the same programs that are available to other defense communities around the nation? In particular, I'm talking about a program called the EUL, the Enhanced Use Lease Program, wherein military facilities or military communities around the nation are afforded the ability to take a look at unused property, military-owned property, so that the private community can then use it to help develop and enhance the local economy. Have they made that? Have they even announced that, that that is even part of the consideration for this military buildup on Guam? No. It's been totally silent. It's been totally off the radar, that their land is not even available for us when in other communities, in a, in a similar situation like ours, it is. Military lands are available for economic development, and yet that is not on the table. That is nowhere to be found as part of the mitigation or part, one of the alternative solutions to, to this military buildup on Guam. When we talk about the infrastructure, they expect us to go out and fix our infrastructure, going to the bond market based upon anticipated projections from this buildup. As the previous speaker noted, the projections are faulty. They may not be there. They want us to go to a bond market on projections that we cannot really rely upon, which, again, would throw us into a situation that if we do go to the bond market to repair our infrastructure without federal assistance, then we will constantly be indebted and never get out of the hole that we're in. In fact, we will probably be in a deeper hole going forward. And that's not right. Is this the kind of partnership that they were talking about at the beginning? It doesn't seem like a partnership in terms of mutual benefit. It seems like a partnership that is very one-sided, and it is. The planning has been one-sided. They took three and a half years to put this draft EIS together, yes, gathering a lot of input from our own local agencies, and yet not really giving us an opportunity to be a part of that process as they put this plan together. And then they give us at the tail end sixty days to review it, excuse me, ninety days. Initially, it was forty-five, and then we had to ask for an extra forty-five days. After they took three and a half years and spent tens of millions of dollars on this plan, and yet we have forty, uh, excuse me, ninety days to review it and comment before it goes forward. Something's wrong with this picture. Ultimately, when it comes down to it, when we had all the public hearings, when the legislature held its public hearings in which a lot of the agencies came down to basically testify on their position, it came down to the central issue. How are they going to be funded? How can they accomplish the mission with the growth in population, with the growth in the infrastructure, and all the corresponding social problems that are going to come? How are we going to be able to handle it without any kind of funding? And the very problem with this draft EIS and all the other meetings and all the other rhetoric that the Department of Defense puts out there, they have not made one single commitment to us. They keep telling us, go to the bond market, borrow, because in the future you're going to be making a lot of money. We cannot rely upon that, as it shows in their draft EIS. The numbers they put there in terms of the projections for the economic benefit are wrong. If we go out based, if we go out to the bond market based upon the projections they have, again, I will reiterate it, we will be broke. We will forever be in debt. We will hawk the future, not only of our children, our grandchildren, probably great-grandchildren and their great-grandchildren. We will be owned. We will be slaves on this island. That's not right. And that's why it behooves me to stand up here and say something, as opposed to just say yes on a vote. We must not forfeit control of our destiny solely to those who have no real affinity for our island. We must not forfeit control of our destiny. This is what we are here for. This is why we gather as a community. This is why we elect our leaders, so that we can actually have a say in what we want our community to be. But the way that this is proceeding, the way this planning, this military planning is proceeding, ultimately is taking away every opportunity for us to be a part of our own destiny. They will dictate. They will say it. They will say this is what's going to happen here, this is what's going to happen there. This will be ultimately be a fortress, a United States military fortress, with no real regard for what is existing right now, and with no real regard for what has existed for centuries, the culture, the people, the environment. One of the questions when quarantine, inspections and quarantine came before us, and we asked, bottom line, there is no funding to even look at perhaps invasive species that could definitely ruin our environment, that could wipe out all the plant, the indigenous plant species on this island. What would be the solution then? Would it be the same solution that they employed back in the Vietnam War when they wanted to make sure that there were no mosquitoes so that the soldiers here would not be uncomfortable, and they would then take an airplane and spray this whole island with chemicals that we don't even know that they sprayed on us? Is that going to be the solution if invasive species start attacking this island? At one of the forums that Jigpo held, I went up to the environmental group, and I asked them about what their plans were for invasive species. They assured me, oh, don't worry, we have it all controlled. But they explained it to me, but the problem with that explanation is that they were talking about what they plan to do on the base to control invasive species from coming in from military flights. When I asked them what are the plans for them to address, perhaps the multitudes of invasive species that are going to be coming into the island through our ports because of the building materials that will be coming in, because of the vehicles that will be coming in, because of the people that will be coming in, they looked at me dumbfounded and had no answer. They had no answer. In other words, they're looking out for their own, and perhaps that is their mission. And we have to take full recognition, make full recognition that exactly what they're going to do. They care about themselves and their mission, and they really do not care about being a sincere partner in this buildup. At least they have not shown it, they have talked it, but they have not shown it. Talk is cheap. Talk is cheap. Ultimately, Mr. Speaker, I've been trying to be very even-keeled about this, hoping, hoping, ever since the first day I stepped in office, that in the end, or at least by this point in time, that they will have made some gesture of goodwill to show that they will be a good partner. And I'll tell you right now, by their inaction in addressing a lot of our concerns, even just to gain goodwill amongst the community, I feel insulted. I believe the people of this island are raising up in anger because we, as a people, are feeling insulted. And that's not right. Again, it goes to the very essence. Are we American citizens or are we not? We are American citizens by name, and yet we have no rights, we don't have the same rights as American citizens in the United States. And so when you apply that whole concept here, DOD and the military establishment probably look at us and say, hey, they're not really American citizens. That's not right. That's not right. There are a lot of things that need to be addressed, both, both from the past and now here at the present. And like I said earlier, we cannot and we must not forfeit our right to control our destiny. destiny, to at least, at the very least, have a say in it. Yes, I have looked at other draft environmental impacts that they have done for other jurisdictions, for projects they have done elsewhere, and in the end, they have said, "Well, no substantial impact, or there will be an impact, and we will go ahead and mitigate it." And very easily, it passed, right? It got signed off by the Secretary of the Navy, and the project proceeded, in spite of the objections of the local community that was to be impacted. Is this what's going to happen here? Well, they might have that power. They might have that ability to do that, just because they're calling this in the name of national security. But if they are to be a true partner, if the federal government really embraces us as true Americans, then we must be a part of that community and part of the discussion, and the issues that are before us today and that have been before us from the past have got to be addressed with this buildup. Mr. Speaker, I stand in full support of this resolution. It may not be as comprehensive as many of us want it to be, because we all have little differing opinions on some of the issues that should or should not be in this. But ultimately, this is a chance for us to stand together, party lines aside, biases aside, knowing full well that we have a common enemy, that we have a common foe out there, and that is the control over our own destiny, the loss of the control of our own destiny, the loss of having anything to say about how we want to live, how we want to preserve our culture. Have they talked about the degradation of our culture? Was one of their alternatives to perhaps help us build a museum that they know full well we've been trying to build, has that been one of the mitigating factors to help preserve the island? No. Or the culture of the island? No, it has not been. Should that be on the table? It should be. It's not in this resolution, but I'm going to say it now, probably it should be. When they start talking about drilling 22 water wells up in Anderson, have they talked about another perhaps mitigation or alternative to that in terms of providing good water to everybody on Guam? And that solution might perhaps be to help Gov Guam repair the existing system we have now on island, knowing full well, they know full well, that we have a water loss of at least 50%, about 50% of our water that's being pumped up and piped. Did they take that into consideration, or did they even discuss it in the draft EIS? They have not. They have not. And because of the things that are not in here, in the draft EIS, that alone is a reason to be insulted. That alone gives us reason to say, "Wait a minute. Is this really in our best interest?" Yes, there are a lot of people out there, especially our business community, who would like to be a part of this, who need to see that there is some opportunity for the businesses to grow, excuse me, especially after a lot of these businesses have been with this community through thick and thin, through the typhoons, through the avian flu, through all the ups and downs. They're still here, and they would like to be a player in this. But again, we have to make sure that they are players in this, within this draft EIS and even within the whole discussion leading up to this point. Have our businesses actually been given any kind of designation of preferential treatment to be able to participate, so that we can actually gain, our businesses can actually grow? I talked to our businesses in the Chamber of Commerce right now. They're disappointed. They're the ones who actually were really excited and really pushing for this military buildup to come in, and yet now that things are starting to proceed ahead, they're finding that they are not even part of the process, that they are not even getting any of the Something's wrong. And this is again where we're seeing that we are forfeiting. If we don't raise, rise up now, we are forfeiting our voice in terms of controlling our own destiny. Our own businessmen, who were the ones favoring this and really pushing for this, are now the ones being kicked in the butt. Something's wrong with this picture. Something's wrong. There are a lot of things that can be done. This is not an impossible task to do, to have a very synergistic growth for both the military and our island. This is actually quite a simple task. All it takes is for our federal government and the Department of Defense to understand that to be in a true partnership, it has to be a win-win situation. It's not an all-for-me and nothing-for-you. Mr. Speaker, I stand in full support of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I understand Senator Palacios, she wishes to be heard.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I follow, of course, the presentation of previous speakers, and I do agree with their, with their observation, the presentation, their sentiments. I rise in support of this resolution, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, while the resolution in some parts probably might give a tone that would appear probably that I personally waver in my, in my, in my position as to where I stand with respect to the military buildup, I just want to make this statement that I do support the military buildup. And with this resolution, we're sending a serious message, that there are some things that have to be considered. Now, one, one point of the resolution that kind of not sit well with me, and I'm not objecting to it, is under the, on the agenda priorities, and I counted there are 18 concerns, agenda priority concerns, of the fact that the Republic of the Philippines is not considered as one of the countries that this legislature will request the U.S. Congress to include on the list of approved countries for a visa waiver. The Republic of the Philippines is a friend of the United States of America. And on page 10, line 17, in this resolution, it only requests for the inclusion of Russia and the Republic of the Philippines, or rather, the inclusion of Russia and the Republic of China on the list of approved countries. Our friends, our brothers and sisters, who are here and who are families in the Philippines, have been longing for this kind of recognition. But again, while I do not object to this, I, i- if in some way this can be interpreted as an intentional exclusion, I do not support the non-inclusion of the Republic of the Philippines, but it is not here. But I support, overall, I support the, this resolution, Mr. Speaker, but I, I, I took notes of that, and I just want to share that. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Senator Respejo, thank you.
Mr. Speaker, I just have a point of information. I truly appreciate the previous speaker's concerns. If you go to line, page 15, line four, it does include the visitors from the Republic of the Philippines.
Thank you very much, Senator Respejo. Any other members of the legislature wish to be heard? If not, Madam Speaker, I await your instructions. We'll take a short recess.
On the top of the voting file, then, on the appointment of Mr. Louis R. Bosa to serve as member of Civil Service Commission with the recommendation to confirm, all those in favor, please raise your hand. No, because this is a member. Mr. Louis R. Bosa received unanimous support, he is therefore confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Mr. Daniel D. Leon Guerra to serve as a member of the Civil Service Commission with the recommendation to do confirm, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Daniel D. Leon Guerra received unanimous support, he is therefore confirmed. On the top of the voting file, then, on the appointment of Mr. Louis R. Bosa to serve as member of Civil Service Commission with the recommendation to do confirm, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Daniel D. Leon Guerra received unanimous support, he is therefore confirmed. On the appointment of Mr. Manuel Pinau in to serve as member of Civil Service Commission with the recommendation again to confirm, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Manuel Pinau is duly confirmed by this body and received unanimous support. Resolution number 275-30. Can somebody please? We're voting on the sub-Resolution 275. Speaker Juan Ben. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, again, I want to thank yourself and every single member of the legislature and staff for really, really participating and providing a lot of great suggestions in how to improve this Resolution 275. You can tell already, and I, what I have to share should encourage all of us, you can tell already that the Congresswoman's office is following our discussions on this resolution. And when Senator Blas introduced an amendment which kind of tightened up the social-cultural impacts this buildup will have, we've got some suggestions to make it stronger. And the way we make it stronger is in the last, the fourth sentence, the last, instead of saying it could also affect outcomes of any future plebiscites about Guam political status, I just moved to change, to delete the words "could also" and insert "will", because this will definitely affect the outcome of any political... That it will. On the Senator Blas's amendment, the, the second paragraph, the last sentence...
Actually, we need to, because this is a direct quote from the DEIS, so we'd have to somehow say that the DEIS says that it could also, but we want to recognize that it will. So we'll work with the legal council to make that decision.
Okay, so on that amendment, are there any objections? Some objections are ordered?
Then the other one on page 14, line 10, to change the word "may", delete "may" and insert "must", so it reads "must be appropriated" instead of "may be appropriated".
On that amendment, no objections are ordered.
And I have, then on line 25, at your suggestion, to change the word "clog", and our office is changing that to say that increases in traffic congestion, so just a recognition that we have language to make that, to tighten that up.
On that motion, then, without an objection, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I, it's appropriate then for me to move at this time that the, that the legislature be permitted to vote on this resolution without engrossment, but that the Committee on Rules staff work closely with the legal counsel and the clerk. We'd be very happy to continue to assist in the engrossment of this, and transmit of this resolution.
So, on that amendment, without an objection, so ordered. So we're down to the voting file, but we're going to have to recess and ask the rest of our colleagues to please join us. Sergeant at Arms, please get the other members in. Back in session, on the motion, then, which is to adjourn subject to the call of the Speaker, but I just want to remind everyone that Monday at 9 o'clock, I will call us into session for the Governor's address, and then the Congresswoman on Tuesday, 6:00 We are adjourned until Monday at 9:00 for the State of the Territory address.